Starting the recording. And I'm going live on Facebook. You are good to go.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, December 10th, 2020, 7:00 PM meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. Tonight, we're having a joint meeting with the Town Hall Building Committee, the Elm Street Working Group Representatives, and the Alternative Energy Committee. Tonight's meeting is being conducted on the Zoom platform and livestreamed on Cohasset 143 TV and on Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda, which is on the town's website. The Zoom app can be loaded onto a smartphone, laptop, tablet, or other computer. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at the meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to utilize the question and answer feature on Zoom, including typing in their name and address for the public record as well for any speakers. The chair will review questions and direct them should they come up to the appropriate participant for a response. The meeting is also being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. Tonight's meeting, just to sort of set the tone, is really an update from the committees that I mentioned earlier. I don't anticipate other than one matter of business right at the top of the agenda that will have any votes this evening. It's really just a discussion and updates from these hardworking committees that we haven't heard from in a while. So with that, I'll call to order with a roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton here.
Corey Evans here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Harry Thompson here.
Great. And if everybody would like to join us, and it's a little awkward without not having a flag, but Jack has one behind him. So if we could stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd like to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anybody here or in the gallery who has a public comment that they want to bring to the board's attention that is not on the agenda? If so, if you could flag yourself in the question and answer period, answer button on the bottom of your screen. Otherwise, we're going to move on. And if I see somebody pop up in the next minute or so, we'll go back to them. The only order of real business we have, other than the updates tonight, is the Village Church Fair. We had Linda Indak came before us last week for approval for the Village Fair for Saturday, December 5th, with a rain date on December 6th. And unfortunately, the whole weekend was somewhat of a bust. And they would like to conduct the church fair this Saturday, the 12th, on Cohasset Common. So I don't think anybody's here representing the Second Congo who came before us last.
Linda is here.
Linda is here. I'm sorry. There you are. I got a big gallery to look at. So hi, I'll let you do your piece.
Well, we're less than we were than that the Mecca Reeds went last week and the Chowder ran at the same time, just so they weren't the only people alone sort of running their event. So actually, that makes Saturday's event will be less things happening at the same time. So like last week, we're concerned that Chowder and ASP would be happening at the same time. They will not be happening at the same time. And so basically, that's the same. And if it rains this Saturday, then we're just canceling, you know?
Get everything up on social media and the web, and people will be happy to support you through shopping.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a lot of time, but we'll do it.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. Any questions from the board?
Weather doesn't look good at all for Saturday, Linda.
I know.
Phil, are you serious?
It says late afternoon, Phil.
Okay.
So fingers crossed.
I'm showing 91% chance of rain on Saturday.
Right, but I just listened to Channel 5 and they said late afternoon.
So could my... Yeah, Linda, if there's any chance of rain during the window, like, for example, if we were to approve the change of date for this Saturday and extended it from like 8 to 5, would that, would you be inclined to like set up from 2 to 5 if, you know?
Well, yeah, I suppose. I mean, we were figuring probably more the other way around. We were down there at 8:30 and get set up and, you know, close up if it rains. You know, I mean, if it's just a few sprinkles, we might still get some people, but you know, if it pours, then that's a different ballgame.
Yeah, and you can make that call at the time. I would be inclined to, you know, give them a wide spans of hours that makes sense before it gets dark. Any other comments? Any questions from the board?
Well, I think it's a great cause, and I think if it does get canceled, people should just send money. Full disclosure, I'm a member of one of the organizations, so I'm not a disinterested person. Excuse me, I had dental surgery yesterday. I'm in pain.
Oh, you and I both.
Well, Jack, I do know that people came last week and supported us on this committee, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yes, I got my wreaths and my chowder. So and as, and one of the real reasons behind our enthusiasm is because we really know the community values, just some kind of, not only the organizations in town, but just some kind of regular happenings, you know? We want activity to this extent that we can do so safely, so.
Good point. We need vitality. Whatever vitality we can get in the village is important.
Yes. So any other questions from the board? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion. We move the change, change the date of the Village Church Fair to 12:12, 2020, from 8:30 to 5:00 PM. Available hours on the town commons.
Second.
Okay, and we'll go to a roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Harry Thompson, I.
Great. Good luck, Linda. We'll be keeping our fingers crossed and Phil and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thanks, Linda.
Good night.
So on our agenda, there are three committees. There are four committees listed. We're not going to hear from the zoning working group tonight. Next Tuesday night at our regular meeting, we're going to have a full update from Master Plan Implementation Committee and all of those subgroups, with the exception of Elm Street, which we're going to have a briefing on this evening. So the first, the first thing we're going to tackle, and these all relate to our goals, the Board of Selectmen goals for the town, is the Town Hall Building Committee update. And I hope your advanced billing lives up to to all the greatness that I've heard about the work you're doing. So I'll turn it over, I think, to Phil.
And this is just for technical purposes. I've given Mark co-host the power, so you can run a PowerPoint. Does anyone else you need me to do that for? Just tell me. PowerPoint or something, just let me know.
Yeah, is that, we'll address that as it comes up if we need to shift around. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for having us. We're kind of excited to do a presentation tonight. Give an overview of the project, and we think we've got a pretty good design. After spending several months doing space assessment on the use of the inside of the town hall, and the architect has put together some renderings and want to show those to you tonight. Before we get started, though, I do want to address the issue of cost of the project. Later this month, we have the project, excuse me, the project management team and the design team working on some of the numbers for the build, and we hope to have something for you sometime in January, probably towards the end of January. So, you know, we're not at that point that we can even talk about numbers tonight, so we're just going to be showing you what we have for general design. And I do just want to introduce our committee, because I think it's pretty important to know what's behind all of this. We have a really diverse committee. They work really well together. I just want to mention a couple of the assets that they bring to it. And most of the committee is here tonight, which is great. Wayne Sawcheck certainly has been involved in a lot of town affairs. He's on the SOAR Commission now. He has extensive building experience. He's the vice chair of this committee. Carolyn and Wayne was also on this committee two years ago when we went to the Town Hall Building Committee. Carolyn Coffey lives on the common and will add, you know, some vital historical impact on the design. She's really good with numbers, so she's going to help us when we start to crunch some numbers. And she also sat on the board the previous time, so it's good to have that experience as well. Sam Wakeman, the Chair of the Budget Committee, and he sat on the board last time around as well. Tucker Man is with us. Tucker helps represent the young community for us. And his expertise is in social media, and we're going to hear from him later tonight, start talking about the direction where we're going to go. We start throwing some of this stuff out to the public. We have Josiah Stevenson. Josiah is an architect by trade. He has added a lot to this project. You know, the last couple of go-arounds, he did simple things like letting in natural light in areas that wouldn't, would not have had it in one of the designs. Just simple things that he has seen and adjusted this project in a really positive direction. So we love having him with us. Gerd Lewis. He helps us with representing some of the younger community as well. He's got a business background. He's had some really great input for us. And Mark Cameron, and Mark is a project manager by trade. So he's been, he's been really helpful with getting, keeping us on track and giving us a good direction. And both Michelle Leary and Jason Federico, who are on the staff there, have attended all of our meetings. And they were both on this project last time around, so their experience and guidance has been immeasurable. And Michelle's just put so much work into it, and Jason's been right there with, with any of the answers that we've, you know, we needed from some of the studies that were, went through last time. And it's just invaluable to have some of that information in front of us and not have to wait for studies coming up and new stuff. So that's our, that's our board. I, you know, it's been kept at a very professional level. We work really well together. Everybody respects everybody, and everybody has a chance to have some input, and it's diverse enough that that we can look at the project from all different sides, which is really, would be kind of fun to see. We hired Vertex. John Lemieux and Steve Kirby are both here from Vertex, the project management team. And then I think Phil O'Brien, Phil O'Brien is here from Johnson Roberts, that's the architect team. And I think I'll turn it over to John. Do you want to start with us?
Great. Thank you, Phil. Good evening, everybody. Really happy to be here. I'm here with Steve Kirby, who is our senior project manager for the project. Let's say a little bit about our firm, and then I'm going to run through just the schedule to date and what we're thinking moving forward and planning as of right now. So Vertex has been around since 1995. We're a Waymouth-based company. The company was started there and has remained there through its 25-plus years. You know, between our staff and the staff at Compass Project Management, who's also a Vertex company, we've got over 40 owners, project managers. So it's OPM work is all we do. We're thrilled to have another historical renovation addition project to work on. And frankly thrilled to have another project in the South Shore, because I'm a South Shore resident, and I love the commute. It's great. You know, as far as, you know, local work, if you're familiar with the Seth Ventress Building, right off of the Fairgrounds in Marshfield, that was our first historical renovation. That was a, an 1895 building that is the single oldest continuously owned town building in the town of Marshfield. It had a great, great time renovating that, bringing that upstairs, which had been cobbled into small office spaces and back into a big community, community room, dropped the basement, able to put office space down there. Just really a reimagining of a great old building, and we're thrilled to have, you know, that opportunity here. Also, you know, for local work, you know, we also did this Situate Public Safety Building down on 3A, and we're currently doing the Senior Center of the Town of Situate as well. We've also worked a number of projects with Johnson Roberts, so we're thrilled to be able to work with them as a team again. As far as the schedule, though, on the project, you know, as Phil said, we were brought in as the OPM in March, just before March of 2020. And I think the interview for Cohasset was the last time I actually sat in front of an actual interview with real people. Everything else has been on screen since then. You know, we went through designer selection in April, selected Johnson Roberts, you know, had the kickoff meeting with them in May. And really, between May and November, it's been about programming and space needs and making sure and working with the building committee, working with Michelle and Jason as, you know, as essentially residents of the building. And Chris, making sure that, you know, all of that programming is, you have the necessary space that you need, a little bit of room to grow, but also trying to, you know, get the economy that's necessary. Once that stuff was nailed down, and Phil will talk more about the process, you know, that they've gone through to date. But, you know, once that was nailed down, we had conceptual plans. Those were shared with the committee. And then, you know, schematic design, and as Phil mentioned, you know, that, it's those designs that are currently with the cost estimator that we'll be digging into, getting that result back. We'll be looking at those results and then you know, putting together that total project budget for review with the town. Moving forward plans, you know, the goal is to, at some time at the next Springtown meeting, request additional, additional funding for the completion of the design to be able to have Johnson Roberts bring that design all the way through bid documents, and then be able to bid that project so that we can come back to the town subsequently in the late fall with a, with, you know, true construction bids in hand to say, hey, you know, this is, this is what it's going to cost. And so that the voters of Cohasset know and that the number that they're being presented with is legit, it's real and complete. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Phil O'Brien from Johnson Roberts, who will take you through a little bit about the design itself. Phil?
Thanks a lot, John. I'd like to share my screen if somebody needs to give me permission to do that. I've got a brief slideshow that's got a, thank you, that's got a couple of slides in it. Johnson Roberts, I'm a principal with Johnson Roberts Associates. We've been around about 22, 23 years. I have been there since about four months after Johnson Roberts started. And Stuart Roberts and I actually worked together in another firm for seven years. So we've, I think we make a pretty good team. As John mentioned, we've done a number of projects with Vertex, and they're a great company to work with, and we're delighted to be working with them and with you. Almost all of the work that Johnson Roberts does is public work, all chapter 149, almost exclusively. Do a little bit of private work if somebody twists our arm, but basically what we do is public work. And what we do is buildings just like this, new buildings, renovations, historic renovations or restorations, additions to community buildings, libraries, town halls, police stations, fire stations, and just to name a couple. We did a historic restoration and renovation of the town hall and air of the town hall in Sturbridge and the town hall in Wyndham, just to give you an idea, the kind of things that we've, that we've been doing. And, and a lot of the same things that we've run into there, we've run into here. And, and there's also been some things that have been interesting and unique for your building, and I'm sure you probably know. So we are kind of just getting into the design development phase. So this is the point where we're developing the design that we worked through during schematic. And we're beginning to look at mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems and so forth. Now, we've got some direction on which way we're going on that, that we're going to be utilizing when we, when we get into the the estimating that's going to happen in January. And we have also begun to develop the plans, which I think somebody will show you a little bit later. And we've also begun to develop the exterior of the building. The exterior of the building, at this point, we've, we've got some model views that I'm going to show you. And we are at the point now where the building is beginning to take form, and I would say that it's taking form, but it's not really, it's not complete yet. So the images I'm going to show you are preliminary, and the building is, we've got a pretty good idea about the size of it, the mass of it, the form that it's going to take, what kind of the windows may look like, where the door is going to go, the slope of the roof, those are the kind of things that we, that we know at this point, and there'll be some more detail and trim and so forth that gets developed a little bit later on. I just, I'm prefacing it by saying that so that you aren't concerned that the building is stripped down. Looking at this point, it's still preliminary. I'm going to start with the site plan, just to orient you all. Highland Ave, the street here, the common is out front, the church is next door. This is your entrance drive right now, and we're showing a new potential parking lot layout. Small barn back here, storage building. The connections, the brick walk and the connections to the church are along this side here. So the original building sits there. The proposed addition sits down on the lower part, center of the screen here. Your existing addition kind of wraps around the back of the building and is further out into the parking lot and a little bit further back off, off of the front lawn. One of the things that I will point out is, is that the building sits pretty tight to the existing property line here. And with this big cut out of the front lawn with the driveway that runs through here, it really starts to squeeze the building out. And, and there's a lot of pavement around it. So one of the things that we, that we were suggesting is that we widen out the drive a little bit, have a two-way drive that comes in and out, and kind of simplify the traffic flow in and out of the parking lot and restore more green space than a front lawn by eliminating this driveway. Incorporate this grassy point right here and kind of create a large front lawn for the building to sit on. And while trying to maintain these, these large trees that are there existing. Handicapped accessible parking, main entrance that comes in from the side, so it's accessible and easy to get to as you move in and around the building, easy to get to from the, from the parking lot. And it's a single entrance that comes into the side of the building that lines up with the entrance. These existing doors that go into the main hall, and we've tried to line that up. One of the things that we're trying to do with this addition is clarify the way that folks move around the building, simplify. So that when folks come in, it's easy to find what you're looking for. It's easy to find where you're going. And the organization makes a little bit more sense. So from the exterior, you can see, I wanted to start with this shot, because one of the driving forces behind the design is that the existing building really wants to take prominence, it wants to have the street presence. We're not trying to compete with the, with the grandeur or the beauty of your original building. So we've designed an addition that takes its inspiration from, takes its cues from the original building. But there's, there's a hierarchy here that we're trying to maintain. The original building is going to maintain that provenance, prominence on the street, and ours is going to help to frame this new front lawn that we're talking about. And create a sense of space out in the front and set back a little bit and be respectful of the original building. You can see we're picking up on some of the design ideas for some of the windows that have happened on the existing building, and they're drawn in a simplified way, as is the trim and so forth around the building. But I will point out, this, this section of the building and the slope of the roof and so forth, the width of the building, it comes directly from the original building that sits here on the street. It's the same roof slope, it's the same overhang, it's the same width. We're really taking all those cues from the original building. The difference here is that's actually a little bit shorter, again, trying to give hierarchy and prominence to the original building. We've got the connection that's recessed back, set back a little bit, that connects into the original building. We're trying to connect to the original building a little bit more delicate fashion than the existing addition does. And in the plan, we have a stairway that runs up between the floors of the building that happens in this area. And the windows that we have in this area kind of reflect the way that, the form of that stair. Kind of moving around the side, this would be kind of standing in the driveway coming in. You can see this is, this is where that running across the front lawn here is where that driveway is that we've restored and give you, given you back a nice kind of a green quad on the front of the, on the front of the building. And the building, it's got kind of a very sensible order. When you look at the sides of the original building, you see the kind of windows marked along at a very kind of even pace. And we've picked up on those cues, and we're doing the same thing around the existing building. The existing building has a kind of a hierarchy in the windows as well. When you look at the windows on the sides of the building, the larger windows are in those large main halls. The smaller windows are in the smaller spaces. Pretty much all of the spaces we have in the new building are for the most part offices, and so they're all kind of equal in weight. And so we've kind of taken that, that same language kind of follows through around the building. And so that all the windows kind of pick up on that same regular rhythm from the original building, pretty much all the same size. Coming around the side, what you might see driving into the parking lot, there's the main entrance. It's accessible to all, a small set of steps that come up basically to the existing floor line. And we're going to try to grade that up a little bit to make it very easy. So what we're looking at here is sidewalks that get you up to the, to the entrance floor here rather than, rather than ramps. So these will be graded shallow enough that we don't need to put railings on them and so forth. There'll probably be a railing on the stairs, but again, like I said, the model is still in a simplified form. I'm just kind of moving around. I think I might have one more. That is about, yeah, that is about it. Just give you an idea about what that building is starting to look like.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Before we move on, any questions from the board? Corey?
Yeah, one thing, you know, I noted, I do appreciate the aesthetics of the revised traffic flow. However, I wasn't clear about where the drop box is. The drop box is something that the town really started to use, especially these last months, and having the circular driveway where you don't have to turn around in the parking lot, I think is, while I'm all for less pavement, there is a practicality benefit to having that design. So I do have a little bit of concern with, with the traffic flow if we lose that kind of feature.
We are, we are looking at ways to incorporate that into the parking lot at the rear portion of the building and still make it a drive-up that is convenient for people to drive up, to drop into, and also convenient for people that are working inside the building to, to collect those materials and bring it back in. So we haven't lost sight of that. We're trying to find the best place to do that. Not sure that the front lawn is the best place to put it, and so we've been thinking about putting it in the rear. And that just makes the work, the travel flow a little bit better for vehicles. We're trying to find a safe and easy way to do it for everyone.
Any other comments from the board? All right. Who's next?
I think I can take over and share some of the interior. So I just wanted to introduce Mark Cameron. He had some commentary on the project.
Hope you're going to walk us through this.
I know, there's a little bit of a delay here in the movement of it. Trying to manipulate the page here. Let me exit this. So it'll be easier to manipulate it in this view here. But all it's loading here, this is going to be, this is going to be the first floor plan of what's going to be the new addition. So it'd be a removal of the existing annex and and a new addition that would be built. This, over here to the right, is it's loading would be the main entrance, a single entrance. So that green area just depicts the main single-point entry that the public and, and staff would enter through a vestibule into a main lobby where you've got some service counters between treasure collector, town clerk, and land planning. We tried to get everything on the first floor as much as possible for the customer service-facing departments. Not everything fit down there without making the building too large, which forced some upstairs. So this lobby here would basically be, you know, how is that customer service points for most of the public to enter? The flow would continue if it made sense for it to enter into the auditorium space, but also head up the stairwell into the second floor.
Mark, just elevator, is that, was that the purple?
Yep, the purple is the elevator. So there'd be two, it'd be, sorry, I need to skip off it too fast there. There'd be two doors, there'd be a front and a side door to the elevator, and that's really basically to accommodate the the multiple levels that we're trying to match up with, with the. And that's really basically to accommodate the, the multiple levels that we're trying to match up with, with the with the existing building. So, so the first floor would be continuous, uh, straight on through. And this also helps accommodate the basement level. So you see there's, there's an, there's an entry point here and there's also an entry point here on the first floor. It's just, it's just here. This, is this loading? This is, this is, um, this is the front of the auditorium space. There were some bathrooms that were added in here. That would be used as a, as a function to service the rear of the auditorium in the event of a, a performance of, of some nature, as well as being able to lock the town hall and, and, and all of that portion of the building and leave these bathrooms accessible to the, to the common during hours. And, and here's the, here's the main entrance to the, the old town hall that we've been used to.
Just, just a question, is that where those toilets are in the, in the actual auditorium? You don't have to repopulate. Oh, that you're going to the second floor. Is, are the walls staying the same, that internal wall? So there's sort of that little entryway when you get in there now?
There, there is that, um, I guess it's that concession stand to the left. The front door that would remain there. There are some partitions that do need to stay in the locations that they are. So we utilize those locations to, to work with the bathroom layout. There's also a set of stairs. That I can zoom in. This is the second floor that, that are needed for a code perspective to get up, up to that area. The current stairs there do not meet code. This is the, this is the old town hall side. We are restricted structurally by, by the, by that existing structure there. And these are, these were the best ways to, to set up the offices and utilize those spaces. We acknowledge that some of these may be a little bit larger, like the IT spaces here than, than would be ideal. But based on the, on the partitions and the structural layout there, we had to conform to that. Bathroom as well as a staff break room that would look towards the common. And the new town hall side, it would be the DPW on the second floor. You've also got a multiple stop elevator, both one for the new side and one for the old side. As well as meeting rooms and the town manager's office. And that's, there's some, uh, there's some more deep, some more blown up pictures of them, but that's, that's really it. That's what we've got for, uh, for a general layout. And, um, right now, like we said, we're working through the cost estimate. There is some restoration of, of the areas behind the, uh, the stage and the basement levels and some work with some stair lifts and whatnot on those levels and elevators, just to make the, the new side and the old side work together and, uh, and be one.
That, that's terrific. Just, just to I just muted myself. Chris, you may answer this or maybe somebody on the building committee, but just in terms of, I noticed that some departments have office space in here that currently aren't housed in the town hall. Are there departments that are currently or anybody currently in town hall that wouldn't be in this new building?
So, um, the, the long-term plan had been to have the, the town nurse, the public health nurse in the senior center, because there's an office there now. So she would, uh, you know, so she would just spend her time there. She could come here for events and, and clinics and stuff. But the public health nurse's primary office would then move to the senior center. And then safe harbor, there's been space made here for safe harbor, permanent space. So, um, so that's built into here. There's a little more formalized IT office. There's no offices in the basement anymore. The basement, uh, I believe is pretty much storage, but it could be convertible in the future, but it's not used for offices anymore. So IT moves upstairs. Uh, and I, uh, that's on the, I think in the historic structure on the second floor. And, um, I think that's really the only two that, uh, that jump out to me, making more space for safe harbor. Uh, and again, there's also a bit of, you know, swings, you know, a little bit of flexible swing space if we need to, you know, house an intern or you know, somebody needs to stop by the building. But you can see the basement is now, uh, storage. And the ability that, you know, um, to do some other things down there is needed. You know, put some of the files down there, this space for facilities down there. And then the renovated, um, you know, dress rooms and stuff for the performance space. Unfortunately, the historic basement, unlike the Ventress Building, um, they can't really lower the building, uh, lower the, the floor here without some substantial expense, uh, is I think that's correct, right? There's
Correct, yeah. It's, it's, uh, it's really unusable. The, 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 uh, the floor to ceiling height there is, is pretty, is pretty tight. So it's, uh, without extreme costs there to, uh, underpin and excavate out that foundation that would be, uh, it's a little cost prohibitive, if you will. So that, that area has really remained undeveloped, if you will.
You are planning to, please tell me you're planning to retain that jail cell down there.
Yep, you can see the jail cell in here and, uh, we will, some of us will visit it sometime. But, but I think
By choice, hopefully.
But the, uh, the, the basement also hasn't been fully developed as, you know, as we get further into the design process and understand where the mechanicals are and need to be and, uh, the utilities that are coming off the road and that. And, and in that kind of nature, um, where these mechanical rooms end up being. There's, there, there's some, there's some more work that we have to, to do here as, as we get further down the design. This, this gets us to a point where we can now start the cost estimating. It puts it somewhere. If it moves to the other side of the building, these things may shift around, but, um, that's the general nature of, of the intent.
Terrific. Any comments from select board members? Carrie?
Yeah, a couple of questions. This is fascinating. And I agree with Diane, the jail cell has a certain charm to it. But so is room, I think it was two twenty-two, is that the biggest room where we'll have a lot of meetings, like select board meetings, future committee meetings? Is that the biggest room space for meeting room?
The intent was that that would be, um, a, a primary location. And then as well as being also able to set up, um, the auditorium space.
Okay. And then are all the restrooms just going to be kind of inclusive, all gender? I think that's the way to go anyway. I'm just curious.
They are, they are, they are, um, sing- single occupancy, uh, by nature. We have that ability to, as a, a, you know, make that decision.
All right. Yeah, I agree with that.
I know the, I know the plumbing codes these days don't really support that decision, but I'm sure that's something that's evolving in the, in the construction world. I know the, the Massachusetts State Plumbing Code is definitive in its men's and women's designations.
Um, I'm going to jump in here. It's Phil O'Brien, um, and, and tell you that, uh, in our experience, as long as we do the calculations to meet the plumbing code for men's and women's and the total number of toilet, toilet rooms is available and meets the plumbing code. Whether they're labeled as men's and women's or just toilet, I typically is not going to matter too much.
Great, thank you. Um, Jack? And then Paul. Jack, you're on mute.
Is, is this better?
Yep, I hear you.
Yeah, I, I noticed there was space for safe harbor, but wouldn't the safe harbor offices be better located? You know, in the new youth center in the parking lot?
I don't, I don't, I don't know if there's an answer specifically to that. Chris, do you want to address that?
I, I think we want to make sure the space available here, you know, we're not, in the long run, they may be in a different location. Uh, we wanted to make sure they were calm. Right now they're in a, in a, in a good location for them, but it's in the second floor of the library. It's not terribly accessible to anybody, but, um, and, um, we want to make sure that there was a permanent space available. They may end up in a different location, um, but it's important that there's a home base for them. Uh, and again, it may, it may not be, uh, forever, um, and but it was important based on the board's commitment to, to, to making this a permanent aspect of the town that we made sure that there was space.
Well, I, I will say I was thrilled to see that they're there. They're, they're, they're someplace.
Yeah, but, but you know, I guess my concern is the, uh, safe harbor of the youth center has been voted as a priority on successive select boards. And there's been no progress. So when I suddenly I see them put over into the new town hall. And we really haven't had any progress. We haven't any planning on this youth center. And, and I'm just very concerned and, and probably not going to remain silent if I feel that there is no meth. You know, everything else gets done except for the youth center. And the opioid problems and the alcohol problems that are hitting our kids aren't going away. And yeah, I want the town hall. I've, I've worked on it, but I'm concerned.
Thanks. Any other, Paul, you were next?
Yeah, so, um, in the mechanical spaces, is there an option for, you know, various forms of fueling for the town hall? Whether it be a geothermal or, um, you know, electrical battery storage as an option for, um, you know, fueling the, the town hall?
Yeah, so we're, 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 so we're working through that right now in the design side, um, to design, to evaluate the different mechanical options in the designs and the, and the cost and the, in the long-term operating costs and, and, and benefit down the road. So that's, we are looking at that. The mechanical space is the components really just inside and, and the, in the square footage real estate that we estimate that they would need. But there, there is mechanical on both the new side and the old side. But it's really, for right now, it's for this plan, it's, it's in square footage form.
And is there a, a location that could potentially be for a, a generator? Whether it be, you know, fuel generator, electric generator or some sort of battery storage, uh, as in one other kind of the microgrid for the town hall?
We, well, the generator would more li- more than likely be outside. We have, we have talked about it, um, as, as a group. Uh, we're still exploring, um, that and what the, what the use for it would be, um, to then understand exactly, uh, are we trying to build a, a shelter here? Or are we just trying to build something of convenience? So, um, we're, we're still exploring that, um, but i- it, it has been talked about. But we want to, we would like to get through this first round of cost estimating.
Anybody else? We can move on. Oh, Corey's?
Two things. Um, one, just on, on, you know, macro level. This, you know, seems to conform pretty much to the, to the square footage, but we're talking about moving people in and out. How much more above grade, uh, square footage are we adding with this plan versus the normal one? And my second question is, um, you know, I have a little bit of a pet project in that I, I'm a big believer in, in the community television program. And, uh, as part of our charter, we were, uh, supposed to have room in town hall and that room has never been, uh, given to us. So, um, you know, one thing, going through this process, I'd like this to, um, encourage the board to, to rope in one four three TV to try to get a, uh, you know, some space in the new town hall for, uh, a really a community-driven station. Uh, right now, the, the station is kind of stuck inside of a, you know, a hole in the school. And it's not going to succeed that way. So, you know, a big believer in that program and like to, to at least, um, have some discussions with the group about that. But firstly, you know, just give me a, a square footage answer if you could.
The square footage, I think I'd have to defer to, uh, Philip. I don't know if it's something that you have handy from your your analysis of the space planning.
Is, is the question about the size of the existing addition versus the new addition? Is that what the question is?
Uh, just, uh, the idea of, since we're moving people in and out, you know, how much additional space are we getting in this thing? Including old building and new building versus what we have now. I know that you guys did some, some use analysis, um, for, for what people need. So just trying to get a sensation of what we're getting.
So, so the program calls for an add of about, between, I'd say, three thousand, thirty-five hundred square feet. Um, the, the plan has moved around a little bit in terms of its overall size since the last time I did a square footage takeoff. But it's, it's in, it's right in that area. So that's what the program is calling for.
Okay. All right. We'll move on. Who's next?
Sure. So now we get to the, uh, the fun part. We introduced Tucker Man. Tucker is going to be in charge of the social media side of it. So we're going to try to help to, hope to generate some excitement about the project and he's got some great ideas. So let's hear from Tucker.
Great. Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. Um, so we've been talking a little bit about, um, what we want to, how we want to put this onto social platforms. And, uh, we're definitely doing, um, quite a bit of planning on that. But what we wanted to do is just share our vision at least a little bit with you guys tonight to make sure we are on the right track for you guys and for the town. So what we were thinking, we would use the space of social media for is kind of three main things. The first one, which, um, obviously is extremely important in this time is we really want to try to get feedback from the community of what do you want to see here? What, what do you, what do we need to do here to get this right? What could we use this space for, especially the first floor of the old town hall, um, as we design this? Is there any organization that's like, we would love for this, a science fair or an art festival or whatever? So that's something we're definitely, uh, very interested in doing. The next one, uh, obviously as we, um, go throughout the project, we can post updates there. We can post drawings. We can post mockups and all that kind of stuff. So people can have a sneak peek into what we're doing and so that we remain, um, fully transparent with the residents, um, of the town. And the last one, uh, is we really want to use social media to share the vision of answering this biggest question of why do we need a new town hall? Um, and, and what is it going to be? And what we've kind of decided upon, I think, through some conversations is that Cohasset's a really, really special town. World and the whole world, um, it's just a special place. And the common in the town is, um, a really important part of the town. It's really important to our history, to our character, um, and to everyday life. And, um, we want to make sure we get this building right. So that when we put this up, um, it looks right, it functions correctly and it's going to be relevant for generations to come. So that we can continue to use it. But that's one of the biggest things we have is that the building, uh, we have right now is not working, um, in a lot of ways. And so we need to show the community, um, what's not working, uh, why it's not working. And then also show them and really prove the point of, we should have something really special on the common, um, that feels right. And that when you drive by, you're proud to say, I, you know, that's my, that's my town hall. I live here and and when people drive through and see all the wonderful things that people have done in the commons with their amazing decorations and the amazing way they keep up their homes, that town hall is able to stand out as kind of the pinnacle of that as, wow, this is something really special, uh, in a really special quarter of the world. So that's kind of our plan. Um, certainly to begin, um, I would, I'm thinking we would begin with Facebook. I think it's, um, the best platform to accomplish all of those goals, um, with all of the features it has and, and who's on it and what it, you know, what's happening there. And also there's already so many great pages for Cohasset on there, um, that we can link up with so that as we share stuff, they can share it out to their viewers. So when we talk about what we're doing, you know, to restore the historic part of town hall, the historical committee can do that. And as we talk about what we want to use the space for, you know, one four three can, and various pages can use it. So that's kind of our, um, plan in a nutshell for our social media. And we just want to make sure that you, uh, the select board members feel that we've, uh, hit the nail on the head this time with this.
I told, I told Tucker I'm a platform. So just a couple of questions. And I mean, obviously, one of the most important, um, pieces to getting anything to the point of approval in town is, is the public input process. So social media being one vehicle for that. Do you have a sense of when you would, would start? Uh, I'm sorry, I'm hearing like some residual noise. I don't know if it's from my, do you have a sense when, of when you would start? Or whether you would construct a page that would be town hall, build, you know, building committee page or? Um, and then I would also recommend Instagram, especially for, you know, photos. And when we get further along into 3D design and stuff, because that, that picture When we get further along into 3D design and stuff, because that picture speaks a thousand words.
First of all, I totally agree about Instagram being the next platform I would want to migrate into, especially they hook, it hooks up so easily with Facebook. And yes, I would love to get that once we have some cooler things to show. In regards to when we were getting started, I I don't want to speak for the whole committee because I know we were going to talk about this at our next meeting. But my thoughts and what I talked a little bit about is getting started. Not too long after, but after the inauguration and the holidays. Getting on the other side of of this kind of stuff, because there's going to be, I'm sure, all sorts of stuff on social media for all sorts of things. So getting. To when maybe we have a little bit more of like a reset. So maybe. Mid to late January afterwards. But I want to, we need to talk about that in our next meeting, just to make sure that everyone's feeling good about that being the right start time. And in regard to where we would launch it from, I do need to. Talk to Jen in town hall because I I've never actually run the Cohasset's municipal page. I've worked on some of the pages for the town hall building committee. I mean, for the master plan committee, and I did some stuff back when I was with the planning board. But I just want to see to make sure that we could kind of make a page that comes out of that. That kind of like is already attached to the general municipal page. I'm not a hundred percent sure because I haven't worked with the municipal Facebook page before. So I need to talk to Jen to make sure we can do that. And if not, we can certainly set one up under the auspices of the. Town hall and connect it to all of the already existing pages.
Great. Thanks, Tucker. And Carrie just had her hand up and she's also a social media expert. So she can.
I think we need to really focus on visual content here, both video pictures. If we could get some cool memes and videos. Around old town hall and just adding a lot of visual elements, I think, for both Facebook and Instagram. And I will say, you do see a lot of town action on Twitter, too. I know our police and fire departments put her really well. For fast news updates. So I don't think we should be eliciting any platform, but I do think that if all of us can help get. Footage and content film as you're rolling this out, that that would kind of help with your campaign.
And I really, I I love that idea. Carrie, just to show, to share, one thing we were thinking about is to show the effects of a building that's done right. One of the best things I think we can do is to show some of the other buildings in town that over the years have been done well. So you have everything from really old buildings like the old library, which is now the Historical Society, to you have new buildings like the sailing club. You know, you have all sorts of new, or the yacht club, I'm sorry. You have all sorts of buildings in town that have been done really well. That just adds so much value to the community because you love the way they look. And I I agree. Demonstrating the way that can look and demonstrating, I I found a few other town halls that have recently been restored that. I think I've done a good job. Showing them, you know, this is, this is what we could have.
Great. Any other comments from the board? Good. Yeah. And and thank you. Thank you all. Is there any other, any other presentations? I'm sorry.
Just just quick, we're almost done with our 20 minute presentation.
Don't worry about it. That was, that was very ambitious.
Yeah, no, 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 just a couple of things. Well, we just wanted to ask the the select board if they had any more questions for us before we got away. And then I had one other comment. Is there any other questions from the?
No, I have a couple of like follow ups, but I think it will, it's more directed at at Chris and some of our next steps. So we can, we can get there after you have a chance to do your closing remarks, Phil. I see Jack's hand is up, so I'll recognize Jack.
I just want to say that you people have done a fantastic job. I was in a lot of the early meetings. And I think the town should know the difficulty of trying to get the concept and trying to make it work. And and I am just so impressed. This building look like, looks like it's been there forever. I like the architectural way where things move together. And I really think the town owes each and every one of you a debt of gratitude. Thank you very, very much.
Nicely said. Thank you.
Thank you. That's nicely done. The only other comment I wanted to make was to make sure that we got. Liaisons from the different committees to join our committee. It's starting to get important now that we start to get into drilling down to a design, a final design. Concept and into the money. So I'm not sure who's in charge of that or how that particularly works, but.
Phil, if you could, so those typically liaisons are chosen among the the various members of whatever board or committee. If if you want to just send a note along, or if you know now who, which committees you want liaisons from. We can get that out to the various chairs to put on their agenda to 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 have that conversation. Similarly, you know, if you want one of us, we would just put it on an agenda and talk amongst ourselves.
Yeah, I'll put a list together and we'll, we'll get that. Appreciate it.
Right. Do you have anybody now? I know Josiah used to be on alternative energy. Is there anybody from that? Or does Josiah's long years of expertise fill that?
I I think someone from the committee would be better because it's. Just only interested in energy. And I've been on this committee long enough to have everything in mind. And I think it would be good to hear. Just a dedicated approach. And also that I haven't been on the committee in quite a while, so.
Yep, great.
All right, cool. All right, we'll put that together and and see if we can get representatives to our meeting. I think that's it. We just wanted to close with thank you for letting us present it. And I think we've. You know, I think we've got something pretty good to show you. And I I thought it was pretty well presented. And it was nice to have everybody involved and have a have a say in this. So we just want to thank you very much for having us tonight.
As somebody that's been around for three town hall building committees. I do know how much work it is and what, you know, what just goes involved in trying to thread 800 different needles with lots of different opinions. And it only gets worse when it starts to go into the public. Sphere for conversation. So buckle up. Thank you for your hard work, Jack. I'm not going to pile on. Jack said it really well. It's it's very impressive. I'm, I I feel like I was literally walking through the building, even though it was on, you know, a two dimensional presentation. So we look forward to more conversations. Thank you all very much. Chris, just, you know, just as a sort of a follow up, I I think what what I would like to see is a real timeline. Going forward that that breaks down, you know, annual town meeting action. Which they mentioned earlier in terms of getting architectural, additional architectural money to bring it to bid documents. And, you know, sort of what then happens there. So we can set some some benchmarks in terms of what what information we need and when. And certainly, the biggest, I think, challenge, at least the last round of town hall proposal. Was was financing. So it wasn't the dollar amount as much as it was. What does a $10 million project or a $12 million project or a $90 million project? That's not what it is. But what does any of that look like in the context of our overall capital planning and needs for the town? Because clearly, any big project is going to push out something else. So I want to make sure we stay on top of that outside, you know, while the committee goes ahead and continues with their work. And and we manage that timeline really well.
Just just say a little bit to that. I have been in touch. I've had a couple of conversations with Brian Host. And he's been, he's been great. You know, he was around last time around. He knows how to make this work. And one of his four key. Issues was to make sure that there was financial planning going forward for this project. So you mentioned that and I I hear that from him and he's willing to work with us on that. And that's. We're headed in the right direction, I guess, on that as well.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you. Chris, you want to say anything? Or are we good?
Oh, I just want to thank the committee again. I think it's been phenomenal work. Particularly also want to thank Michelle and Jason have been. Really doing a lot of support work for the group. And I look forward to the next steps and talking more and getting more deep diving into the the numbers and the next stages of this. So thank you.
Great, okay. All right, we're good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're safe.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, everyone. Thanks so much. Next up is an update on Elm Street corridor. And I think Jason, are you here in Lila Lauren or is Lauren here and not in?
Lauren is not going to be here this evening, so.
Okay.
Lauren, yeah, Lauren had a had a personal emergency she had to deal with today. So.
Okay.
Jason has been working on this project alongside her. Are you doing the PowerPoint tonight? I just gave you.
I am doing the PowerPoint.
A a great presentation was made to. About a week and a half ago. So so you can get the benefit of that this evening.
So and and just for some context, next week, we are going to have an update from the Master Plan Implementation Committee. In in the interest of both time and some of the specific. Requests that are going to come forward, probably from the the, from Katie and her team. On Master Plan Implementation Committee, we felt like we could at least have this conversation tonight. To sort of lessen the load and and contextualize everything in the master plan priorities next week. So with that, Jason, you have the floor.
Thank you guys for having us. So they said this is the presentation to be given to the master plan implementation with just a minor. Change that I made recently. Identify the the goal of this was to identify prior items from the master plan. This project was. And we were tasked with by the implementation committee and there was a board formed. The members of Diane, who's with us this evening, Clark is with us, Tim Davis. Mike Sardina is a citizen, large landscape architect. Who's actually done, did some visioning during the harbor. Plan process. Chief Sylvia is on the committee representing. Police and fire, given their use of Elm Street. I'm on the committee from Public Works in Engineering and Lauren's on from Planning. The goals of the project, to enhance the connectivity between the village and the harbor. Improve the conditions for safe pedestrian and cycle and might multimodal use of the road. Complete focus groups with various stakeholders. To get input as to what that, what the corridor should look like. The biggest goal is to establish a gateway viewscape to the harbor and also. Define a pathway from downtown to the harbor. And also, the goal is to coordinate all the different construction projects out there. Both, we have the water main project coming up. Paving and some sewer II improvements potentially there. Any roadway project involves two phases. There's the project planning and the actually three phases, project planning, implementation and post completion. Those are all the steps. We developed our own timeline for this project. When the data gathering efforts, given COVID. We're trying to get somebody to help us facilitate this project externally. Given the interactive nature of 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 this type of a project and questions. We wanted to make sure that we did it as well as we could. We had a presentation at our last meeting yesterday with a facilitator. And we're looking at getting a scope and budget together to then bring bring to. Chris and the Master Plan Implementation Group to see what kind of funding we can get to support that. We're then going into the data gathering includes discussions with the neighbors and in other parties involved. That'll then help us set the project goals. Those goals will lead to concepts. Then we'll present, present those concepts to the interested parties and get community feedback, which will then move to our final design. The water main project, we, the survey is 100% complete at this point. We're working on the design. We're hoping to be out to bid in the early winter and starting construction, spring to summer of next year. The corridor construction would happen the following year as far as paving plan. It's in the paving plan for the for the following year. We've also looked at various funding options. We have the water capital already secured. Looking at two potential rounds, or actually three potential rounds of complete streets funding for the pathway. We're looking at a park funding is is another opportunity for for community parks. Chapter 90 obviously is the paving. And then if we need to, annual town meeting, we'll have two bites of that apple if we need to. There's a mass downtown initiative that we're going to look at for planning money, as well as Mass Works, which is what we had just done for the Route 3A. Which we weren't successful on. Generally speaking, the there's a 60 foot right of way there with 50 feet from back a sidewalk to back sidewalk. So basically now we're looking at how to allocate that space. And so you see here is kind of some of the options of of things you can try to fit within that. All these would not fit within that area, but it's kind of just you take an a la carte and try and determine. What people think is the best use there. As I said, Mike Sardina did some stuff with the Harper Plan during the Harper Plan. He did some conceptual. Cross sections of what the street could look like. Myself and Clark had done some too. And and then there's just some generic ones. So these are, these are kind of the the possible looks of what that street could look like in the future. We're also looking at the intersection, trying to potentially make it safer and more usable. And also create some open green space there that's more usable than the current configuration. The next steps, we're working with the Master Plan Implementation Committee and other groups. Like I said, we're trying to find some some funding for the public engagement portion, because we we find it's going to be hard to really do that. With the public, ourselves. So we we're trying to get somebody that can do some online surveys, even during the meetings. To try and facilitate. That process. So that's it. I want to try and keep it shorter than my last committee did. And. For questions.
Much appreciated, Jason. And and I just to add. We got a presentation yesterday and Jason, you can tell me who that was from, but it was a.
Weston and Sampson. They're one of the two vendors that were selected by the. Peer review process. And they were, they were working on, they were the peer review for the town on the Cohasset Arboretum project. So they have some knowledge of this project already.
And one of the things they presented was some website where it to to facilitate public input. Where, you know, you can do lifetime surveying and get immediate responses from people. And and what Jason's talking about is really having a public input process that. Understands we're going to be looking at each other on 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 a computer screen. And what can we do to make that more lively and engaging than than this kind of thing? Typing your name and address in a in a Q and A button. So anyway, so I I was very excited and impressed by that potential opportunity. Paul, you had your hand up.
Presentation for us at the water department and it kind of keyed me into that. I thought it was a really good use of the technology to help facilitate. Those a meeting in the future.
And and one of the reasons for us having these updates and trying to put it to understand all the other things going on is. You know, that survey and input process might work for the town hall, you know, input processor. You know, which is for all of us to keep these different, you know, different programs, different projects in mind as we as we look at what's working and what isn't. So, sorry, Paul.
Yeah, so from the point of view, it looks like there's several different aspects that we could approach the funding from. And, you know, do you know of any as far as like the state fundings that would come for, you know, open space or for. Public safety or other things like that would be in the grant. Sort of monies that would potentially come from the state.
We are looking at that, so that park one is a grant. So that's 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 one. That's an open space type of a grant. So we are going to look at any opportunities we can find.
Okay. Is is there any like one particular, if you put together like a a small amount, we could do as a a single item. You know, line item from the legislature point of view, that might be a small amount of money, but it could, you know, knock off a few thousand bucks on the. Cost of it. If you have like an individual item that would be accessible for a grant at the state level. You know, some of the thing about that might not be a huge amount, but maybe enough to. You know, something to think about, there might not be a huge amount, but maybe enough to, you know, put in half a sidewalk or a portion of the the grand scheme.
You talking line item kind of stuff?
E- exactly. Yeah, something we could go to the the state rep and the uh and the the senate and see if we can get a a small amount of money for a single line item.
Appreciate you keeping that on the radar screen, Paul. I mean, certainly, we're going to have to look at a number of different funding mechanisms. But I was super happy when Jason and the working group really put together that comprehensive list with all of the timelines against it. Because I think it it keeps us on track and it keeps it in front of us in terms of what the opportunities are that we need to be focused at. And in some cases, we have two bites at the grant cycles, which is good, too.
On this project, yeah. Any other select board comments? Do we get to dismiss Jason? Doesn't seem disappointed in that. Anyway, great. Thank you very much. And 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 when we speak uh next week, you might want to tune in because obviously um we'll have the full Master Plan Implementation Committee update and this this links with economic development, it links with harbor. Connects to the common, works with town hall, et cetera, et cetera. So, great. Good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Guys for having us.
Chris, you came into light. Do you want to comment or?
No, I've just been hiding in the backstage, making sure that the connections are working, so.
Thank you.
The um, as you said before, zoning is going to be next Tuesday as part of the master plan update, uh committees update. And um the next update is we have is alternative energy projects. Um and I believe this here.
Yep, I I see Tanya here and I'll 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 tee this up as well because we um we had a a presentation from Tanya at our last meeting, um vis a vis the procurement process for solar. And and there was some, um we discussed advancing that conversation at another meeting. That's not for tonight. What we're going to talk about tonight or some of their other um initiatives, in particular, um community aggregation and where that stands. And some general updates on some of their other work. So, hi, Tanya. Thank you for being back with us and 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 I know you're jumbling your own c- committee meetings um in between coming and talking to us. So we appreciate your time.
No, and Water Commission. All sorts. But no, thank you. Um we have to stop meeting like this.
Or not.
Or not. Um, thank you, Chris. Can I share my screen?
You can.
All right, so let's see. What I have found is I first have to more or less pull it up. So let me go back to the beginning and share my screen. And we are, I think, going to be able to go through this fairly quickly as we um as we do. All right. So as Diane said, this is an update on our initiatives. We're going to talk about our twenty twenty successes very quickly. Just to lay the foundation for what we want to do in twenty twenty one. As you know, we have quarterly meetings with you, mainly to keep you up to date on what we're doing, but to make sure we're headed in a direction that you, the select board of the town, want us to pursue. So we have been actively, I mean, I think of all the committees, we have the opportunity to bring in money and savings for the town, and so we're doing it. It's a category of um grants that is perfectly set up for us. We've got a great team. You know who the team is. They're very knowledgeable about the electricity industry. We also have Michelle Leary working with us, Brianna, who's an intern who has been absolutely amazing, Fran Collins, representing the advisory committee, Steve Girardi representing the Water Commission, and we also have two liaisons from the School Committee. To date, Michelle Leary has been the liaison for the Town Hall for us. But if you would like to get somebody else from our team, we're happy to do that as well. Uh each member, it's a very active committee. Every member has at least two initiatives that they are championing, if not more. And we are working with subcommittees and liaisons as well. So we're bringing in sort of the next generation of committee members. Our twenty twenty successes, uh the Green Communities, we just got this report. As you know, we're a member of the Green Communities. We have been getting to date five hundred thousand dollars in grant money. We're going after another two hundred thousand. That money tends to be focused on energy efficiency and electricity and energy consumption reductions. And we have succeeded uh over time. If you look at where we are this year versus when we started, we're negative sixteen percent. However, partly because we've had somewhat of a mild um year, believe it or not, as many as many outages as we've had, it's been mild. So if you weather normalize it, our reduction's only five point four percent. It's hard to really tell you where we are because we also have to adjust for Wilcox Commons. But it doesn't matter because even though we're not necessarily reaching our goals, we're doing better than other towns. And so they're very positive. They like the investments we're making. And we will be applying for another two hundred thousand dollars focused on the schools, which is where um their analysis tells us the schools and the library is where we are above where we should be on a square footage basis with respect to our energy consumption. So we're still looking to.
That two hundred thousand dollars, is that over like four years, five years? How does that?
One year. And then we may tap out. We may have tapped out. They have um a cap on how much money certain towns can get. So we are approaching our cap, but we still are eligible for another two hundred thousand, which would be coming in if we win the grant next year.
Okay. Thank you.
I also want to say between this and the microgrid grants that we received this year, which we'll talk about in a moment, we are approaching a million dollars in grants, which is fabulous. Community aggregation, uh so frustrating. We talked about this before. We are in a bit of a no man's land. We are, um our plan, which the town approved, is sitting and waiting for DPU approval. Our goal for the summer or fall of twenty twenty is now looking like it's going to be hopefully first quarter or second quarter of twenty twenty one, where our town residents and businesses can choose. And the actual implementation may not happen till the summer. And this is all hopefully because the Department of Public Utilities has been backlogged and sitting on these plans. We are in the same boat with a lot of other towns, um unfortunately. So we just COVID set us back about six months, um and we hope that's it, but we're we're continuing to reach out to our state reps to try to get some pressure on the DPU. It's just, it it's backlogged.
And and what's the timeframe from when you when the DPU approves it? Is it like, is it just you start immediately sending information out or and you click in a month later or?
Yep. Um I think we we start the marketing. The marketing I'm expecting is going to be one to three months. Because remember first, there's a marketing and then they the residents have to choose.
Right.
If they want to opt out or do something different. And we would expect that it would be uh about one month of marketing, one month of sending out the mailers to get the responses a month for the um aggregator to go out and procure the energy and understand what they are. We then come back to you for approval. If you like the prices, if you think it's a good deal, you hit the go button and the town then enrolls. If you think it's not a good deal, it's just the wrong time or the prices don't look good, um you have the ability to not approve the the program as it ultimately comes out. So we would expect that would be happening possibly in the spring. And then once that happens, I think it's like another one to two months for people to be able to start receiving uh their choice.
Great, thank you.
Microgrids. Twenty twenty one is going to be the year of microgrids for us as a town. We at the Alternative Energy Committee really feel like this is a solution for the ridiculous power problems we have. We also, though, will be looking at whether or not becoming a municipal electric light company, having a municipal electric light company is a solution. There are pros and cons for everything, and and there are some things that are more costly than others. But as we exist today, we have the opportunity to go after subsidies and incentives and money to build the foundation for um microgrids that would allow us to have better power quality for the town. So what have we achieved this year? We've received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in study grant money. And this is currently underway for the DPW station and the police fire station with Harborview. We have, as you know, put out a solar RFP identified five to nine times what the town needs for solar energy uh and sites, and those sites offer savings. And um we're we're hoping we get on your agenda for the next meeting before the end of the year to be able to get approval to award the contract. We don't need a contract. Uh I'm sorry, it's to award the opportunity to negotiate. That is all the bidders need to be able to get in the queue. Um and then they'll continue with design and contract negotiations with us. And if we don't like the price, we can still pull the plug. So there's no commitment, no cost upfront for the town. It's a free option. So we'd like to get that in place before the end of the year so we can get in the queue for the savings. We have a very positive relationship with National Grid, which is a necessity. And we are also, we've done a lot of research on our community load, what it looks like, what the patterns are, what the peak is, how much we might need to build to be able to meet our town needs. And I think we're most concerned about the winter uh versus the summer. So the solar RFP is helping us understand what the potential generation solutions are in the microgrids. But we are, as we've said many times, skating towards the puck on this, but it is a very hot topic. And we are perfectly positioned to get more grant money to help us achieve our goals.
Yeah, just just a question because I think there's a lot of confusion in the community about, you know, some of our initiatives, including solar and having that be of the answer, that that's the microgrid answer that we're looking for. And 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 there are a couple of different things at play, all of which are, I think, is to your, what you're explaining is all of which are helping us get to a point where um we can make decisions on on how to manage our electrical issues and 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 use money. And but but in terms of the, if if you could explain clarify that a little bit, and then also the study grant, what is the specific scope for that?
The study grant is, um we received two separate grants of seventy five thousand each. And they are looking at the two sites that we requested, the DPW station and the police fire station combined with Harborview. These grants were very entrusted in having public-private partnerships. So we've teamed up with Harborview to think about whether that larger campus that does not cross a public right of way allows some opportunity. For example, is it feasible to think about putting solar on Harborview that might provide backup for the police fire station? Or investing in a larger power generator that could help with the Harborview needs? Batteries, how do you bring in a battery on that site? So that's what the study is looking at. It's a high-level feasibility study. We've expressed to them what our priorities are as far as uh backup and reliability and resiliency and potentially as part of a larger solution to the town's power needs. So GE and Nexamp are looking at that for us. So that's the scope of uh those two sites in particular.
Got it. Thank you. Jack has a question. Jack, you're on mute.
There we go. Thank you. My my apologies. Um I keep hearing about it, backup and and you the use of batteries. The problem that that I'd like to understand is when you start putting large amounts of batteries, that's a pretty powerful um chemical solution going on in there. They're very difficult. They take a lot of rare earths to manufacture. And I I and then when they stop working, when they wear out, then you have a very difficult hazardous waste thing of how to do with them is prohibitively expensive. So I I just would want you to look into that aspect of um of of batteries. Because I don't want to start depending upon something where we solve one problem today and we have a very serious chemical pollution uh issue down the line. What do you do with these things? They're very toxic.
Well, totally agree, totally agree. And in fact, with the Water Commission, when we presented to them about the potential use of a water plant site, which as you know, is located right next to the feeder line that tends to go down a lot, taking down the power to the town. That was one of the number one concerns, which is the chemicals that are in not just the batteries, but also the solar arrays. So we have the developers, you know, in play and they can provide us with that information. And I I would say, we talk about these things conceptually. Everything's on the table and and nothing's on the table, right? We don't know yet what the solution is. What we do know is that there is money out there available for towns specifically to address these issues that we're facing. And we're a poster child for why we should be able to get some of that money to explore it further. So we are, we are still in the early stages, I'd say phase one. But we are definitely trying to move forward with, we're we're following the money is where we are. But we are also cognizant of the longer term cost benefits and risks to the town and are doing a lot of spreadsheets to make sure that from a capital um and and liability and risk perspective, we are able to bring to the table for your decision, all of the information you're going to need to make an informed economic decision.
Well, I mean, one of, of course, there's a toxic aspect to the batteries. It concerns me greatly. And the other thing is you take grant money is a very classic example. Uh when I was on conservation, we had a very great idea, a couple of grants, they're going to put in these rain gardens. And they were wonderful. They were like eighty thousand. They were prohibitively expensive, very intricate. Well, there was no money to maintain them and they were very difficult to maintain. They really didn't work very well. They're very ru- goldbergish. And our uh DPW had to maintain them and they really didn't have the staff to do that. So I think we, that's one of my concerns with things like that is future sustainability. So I I really think some hard questions need to be asked on some of these. Because you know, you get the grant, it's great. You pay for it, then you got to maintain it and live with it.
I totally agree with you, Jack. And we have um some very quantitative, financially oriented people on our committee who are looking at these as a lifecycle decision, not just an upfront grant.
Good. Thank you. Well done.
Don't worry, you'll have more numbers than you want to see from us, as you know, as you know.
We have a lot of watchdogs around town as well, so thank you.
And and we would love for them to participate on our meetings. We um we are continuing to have more and more entrusted parties participate in addition to the liaisons. And it's it's just exciting. We have subcommittees that have people from town who are not on any other committee and they're participating on the subcommittees because it's something of interest to them. So we highly encourage people to work with us. And if they do have these concerns, whether it's technologically or from a liability perspective for the town, um you know, join us and and work with us. But we are also keeping the lines of communication very open with capital planning with the other committees that might be impacted, like school committee and the Water Commission and of course yourselves. So we definitely appreciate the communication and the collegiality of people who might have concerns on that.
Thank you. Oh, Paul, sorry.
So I just want to a comment on the battery, you know, the the newer battery technologies are very low on rare earth minerals. And many of the larger ones are the the nickel, uh lithium, manganese, cobalt production ones, which are far less toxic and far easier to recycle. Lithium is a very recyclable material uh as well as nickel. So um as technology advances, we see the rare earths not being used as uh more than the smaller watch batteries or the computer batteries and less so in the larger um battery storage facilities that you'll see in some of the more commercial uh versions. So um that is a a concern, but these newer technologies have really leaned towards the technology that do not have rare earth metal.
And and I think it's also important, Paul's point, which is the advancement that's happening in this space is so. is so incredible right now. We are in the energy industry, we are where the horse and buggy industry was when the automobile industry came into being. So things that would make us move one way even two years ago may not be a valid reason for not moving forward in two years. So we are trying to skate towards the puck. We see these improvements happening and so we're moving forward. But again, without making any commitment, because we don't necessarily have the information to make that commitment at this time. But it behooves us to be in line to try to be there when more information is available.
And you can seize an opportunity. That's great. Okay.
Okay, this is exciting. Our little town of Cohasset now has twenty active charging ports for electric vehicles. And I will say this was an initiative for twenty twenty. We suddenly said, hey, there's money out there for charging stations. The VW settlement was an example, National Grid as part of its grid modernization docket received money for charging stations. And Michelle Leary started going after that like a dog with a sock and.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle Leary. We ended up getting some of the last money that was available from National Grid. So we have two stations with four ports at Town Hall, which we already had. The town parking lot now has two stations with four ports, the middle school, high school, the recreation center and the library. And so a total of twenty active ports for charging. National Grid covered basically a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of that. And the town contributed fourteen thousand, which we will be able to recover going forward by charging for the charging. We have not started that option yet, but as I'll show you on the next chart, there is an increasing interest and knowledge, and I think word is getting out that these town charging stations are available for anybody in town, subject to certain hours when we want them available for the town vehicles. And we're currently not charging for that. So what you see for the last month, we've gained some traction where the number of unique vehicles is going up well above what the town vehicles are. And the total usage from the charging stations is also increasing. And we expect this to continue. And at some point, I think it, and I expect it's going to be in twenty twenty one, we will continue to track these numbers and come to you with a recommendation about either starting to charge others for using those charging stations. Or maybe let's just keep generating the buzz and move forward. But it'll be based on the numbers and at some point, I think this is going to be for you to decide, what do we do with these charging stations that we've been able to implement? That's very useful to the town as well as to the people in town.
That's terrific. Jack has a question.
Obviously, I'm, I'm intrigued by this. Now, the electricity, is there a charge? Who pays for that electricity? That goes in there and, and the other thing I would say from the perspective of the, of the town that if we can charge, I, I think we should be charging. I mean, I don't see why. I can't go to the gas station and fill up my gas tank for, for free. But again, the question is, and I don't know the answer, but I think people in the town would like to know the answer, which is, you know, why we're not charging now or we, we can do it in the future. What would we charge? And, and there's obviously it's providing electricity to these charging stations. Who's paying for that electricity?
And the answer is we're paying for it. The town of Cohasset is paying for it because they're the town's charging stations. I think until this last month, almost the entirety of the charge was being consumed by town vehicles. And I, with some exceptions, but I think that the, I, I don't think the ratio is necessarily changing, but there most certainly is more interest from users and vehicles outside of the town's fleet. So I think it was not, it was an on issue before. And now it is quickly becoming an issue. But remember, these charging stations were just installed.
I know, I, I, I know that. I just think that sooner rather than later, that the town shouldn't be in the business of providing free electricity.
Good. Electrical cars. So, all right, well, that's something we can talk about in the future for sure.
We look at reporting on this. Like I said, we're monitoring this and will on our quarterly meetings present to you. Our solar energy array at the old landfill is continuing to.
Madam Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
No, I just, Tanya, you just said it. I just want to confirm. Can you just, these are open to anyone in town? What is the procedure if someone wants to use them? You know, I find them a little bit, I don't have an electric car, but I would find them a little bit intimidating, not knowing much about them. So which, could you just give us a little bit of a welcome wagon about, you know, who can use these, when they can use them, that kind of thing?
Just lick your finger and put, put your finger in the socket.
That, I think.
I wouldn't do that.
Excitement that I, that I want to do, but yeah, please, thank you.
Yeah, so I think, Corey, anybody who has an electric vehicle is familiar with how they have to charge, whether it's a hybrid or an all electric vehicle. And most certainly Paul has direct experience with this and with the town charging stations. So I think that, you know, it, it's fairly straightforward for somebody who has an electric vehicle, whether or not it is the type of charger. It's not like the super duper high speed chargers. The cars, I think generally need to charge overnight. But that you can, you can get some charge in the course of an hour. And so anybody who has an electric vehicle can look and see what kind of charge it is, whether their electric vehicle is compatible with it. But again, it's not one of those super duper chargers that's going to fully charge you in an hour. They're the slower ones, but it's, it's not necessarily the slowest as well. It's better than simply plugging into your home socket, which does take a, a long time for cars to charge. So the electric vehicle owners, they're, they're used to charging at their homes as well as in parking lots. And this is one of those standard charge point charging stations that they're also probably used to popping in a credit card and paying in other locations.
Thank you. Paul had a question. Sorry about that, Corey. I was checking the Patriots.
So Corey, they, they're pretty standard with a adapter. Most cars will be able to take any of these chargers. They're level two, so they would do on average, maybe fifteen to twenty four miles per hour charge, depending on your automobile, then, then what the structure is on it. But they're, they're quite easily chargeable. Or I should say reimbursable. So you have a, a little fob that you wave in front of it. And if you want to charge, you can, you basically you can put it on your credit card. The other option is if you want to get people to come to the restaurants, that's an incentive for somebody who's coming from outside the, the town to come and get, you know, twenty cents of a charge for, you know, enough to get back and forth from home.
Does someone need to be part of like a, a network or?
They're usually.
Something, or is it just a credit card?
There's usually a fob which you'll, you'll sign up on charge point or
charge point. Okay, that's.
Two or three different places that will, will have a electric charging availability. Or some of them just have you put in your credit card number and you'll do it from that. It's like a swipe system.
And again, this is another thing that, you know, when we talk about Elm Street corridor and we talk about economic development, we're going to, there's no way we're not going to end up talking about the town parking lot. And, you know, do we use parking meters? And maybe we, you know, do, do we set up these electrical stations with charging? And I think I just see this all branching out. We're in a really good place to have these conversations and with great committees doing good work. So I'm going to move you along. So, cause I promised everybody I'd get, get out of here by nine, the latest.
Absolutely. So well, just quickly, you know, as you know, we have had a very successful solar energy RFP. We're looking to finalize an award with you before the end of the year. What does an award mean? It means that we give somebody the opportunity to negotiate with us. There's no cost to the town. There is no commitment to the town. But that award letter, which says we are awarding you the opportunity to negotiate with us for a specific site is all the state needs to put us in the queue for some of the favorable incentives. So it behooves us to get that done this year. Otherwise incentives ratchet down, somebody else gets in the queue first. There's only so much money laying around on the ground. So that's for the next meeting when we meet with you, which I hope you're having one before the end of the year. Because it's a very simple, simple thing that we need to be able to continue to look at our options. Twenty twenty one initiatives. So obviously the solar energy array is important. We'll talk about that in more detail next. Reliability, I, I think there have been more outages this year than ever before, and that's saying a lot. This is obviously a nighttime view of Massachusetts and that is us. I mean, we joke, but that is us. That's not normal. Our feeder lines are some of the worst in National Grid's Massachusetts system. Second worst and fourth worst. And then a couple down the line and it's just, we're in a very vulnerable position. So the town has backup generators, the town people have backup generators, some people don't have backup generators. And it's something that we at the alternative energy committee are taking very seriously and want to look at, which is how do we address that? We've already said micro grid is one of those ways to do that. So you are invited, if you approve us, to go in this direction. We'd like to socialize. What is a micro grid? Because you're right, Diane, it's confusing to people because we talk about solar, we talk about electric vehicles, all these other things we're doing. So what we'd like to do, we already have invitations for visiting micro grids virtually. And we'd like to not just invite the leadership in the town, people in the town, but also expand it out to other municipalities, because if it's virtual, why not? Paul Schubert's NanoGrid in Cohasset has been offered up to us. We definitely want to see his NanaGrid, the batteries and that he has in his garage. Thank you, Paul. Ross Electric Innovation Center. That's the micro grid innovation center. It's right next door in Hingham, now owned by Siemens, who presented to our committee last night. Schneider Electric in Andover has offered it up. Siemens has a living lab in Princeton. And Amoresco, who is one of our bidders that we'd like to award the ability to negotiate with us. They also have examples of micro grids on schools in Massachusetts. So we would like to move forward with just a virtual tour of micro grids, one hour on a Monday, say from four to five. Just a micro grid Monday series, either every week or every other week in the new year to start giving people the opportunity to understand what it is we're talking about when we say micro grids.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
And Earth Day, we as a committee are looking to participate with the town in whatever the town's doing. It's probably going to be virtual, maybe outside hopefully. But we're trying to think about ways to share our successes with the town and create more, more knowledge, more excitement. So stay tuned for that.
I'm, I'm going to stop you only because I, Paul was waving his hand. Did you want to?
I, I just wanted to reemphasize, there were nine outages since June in town. Total of, I think it was like four or five hours. Cause it shows up on my little app that tells me when the battery is working for the house, but.
Right.
So nine separate occasions, it's been out for a significant amount of time. So this is, you know, it's, it's reinforcing the resiliency problem in town. That's all.
With, by the way, almost everybody working from home during that time period.
Exactly.
It, it's, it's extra kind of cutting. On this Earth Day, Tanya, you know, I might suggest that you reach out and maybe even have a joint meeting with Open Space and Rec, because I know they have owned this as a, as an event for the community. And it would be great to get a number of our committees that are engaged in this somehow, working together on it.
Absolutely. I mean, we, we don't see ourselves as a lead on this because we know there's efforts already underway and committees and people who take the lead. So we would just.
Just.
Offer ourselves up as a committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great. Solarized Plus. So the Solarized Plus program has existed in Massachusetts. It doesn't exist any, it doesn't exist with funding anymore. But this is a program where a town could basically pull together potential providers of solar arrays for rooftop, batteries, backup generators, anything that deals with electricity, Mitsubishi split heat pumps. And do some of the groundwork for people in town who want to opt in or potentially hire somebody. There was some pretty stringent requirements on the Solarized Mass Plus program. Debbie Cook and Steve and Patricia Gooding, Pat Gooding are looking at whether or not there's a way we can achieve the benefits without all of the bureaucracy and without creating liability for the town. So we don't know what that looks like, but it may be we join up with Marshfield or there may be something else. We're in the exploratory stage on this, but we would expect by quarter two, we would have a better feel for what this might look like and can start having more discussions with you on that. And that's it for our twenty twenty one initiatives. So I'll pause before I just give the wrap up.
Okay. Any questions for the wrap up? All right, wrap up.
Wrap it up. Here we go. Next step. So key thing is obviously the solar RFP. We're going after grants, reliability, resiliency is a hot, hot topic with a lot of money. We are looking at what that money looks like, what strings are attached, who we might team up with. Some of those grants have a twenty five percent share. We've already had large companies say, we'll team up with you and possibly even contribute a, a portion of that twenty five percent that you otherwise would pay. So we're really, there's a lot of money in this area and we have a problem. So we're looking at the grants, we're looking at the micro grids as a potential solution. We're going to be looking at a municipal light company structure, just to know what that looks like, what it might cost, what the potential obligations are. Made in Cohasset, Solarized Plus and Earth Day to just help share some of our successes and keep the excitement going. So this is our quarterly report. Thank you for letting us come before you and give us the opportunity to do all this.
Thank you, Tanya. Much appreciated. And I'll, I'll be in touch about the, the discussion and the decision making point, the decision point that you need from us. So we are meeting before the end of the year.
All right. Excellent.
Good. Thanks very much. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we purposely didn't put selectman comments, like word comment or town manager comments. So unless anybody has anything relevant to what we just talked about that they want to add, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second. Good work. I didn't even finish my sentence. Second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Jack, rate nine.
Where you have an eye.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Go Patriots.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Hi, everybody.